Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
David Abdullah?
Here.
Bill Bazey?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Tom Wenzel. Tom Wenzel. Tom Wenzel is...
Here. Oh, there he is. Tom, are you here?
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Congressman Wenzel just implore the public agent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay.
For which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Okay. First item on the agenda is oath of office administered to city clerk appointing Lynn M. Senior.
Are we ready, Ms. Senior?
I am.
Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Lynn M. Senior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And faithfully perform the duties of city clerk.
And faithfully perform the duties of city clerk.
In and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
In and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
The county of Wayne and the state of Michigan.
The county of Wayne and the state of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Good luck. You'll have to memorize that oath soon.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Next item we have on the agenda is the agenda approval. At this time, I need to remove the resolution to override the veto because the information has been provided. So at this time, we will take items 8B, 9A, and receive note and file. At this point...
Council Chair?
What's that?
Can you repeat that one more time if you don't mind? Why it's being taken out?
Yeah. 8B and 9A are going to be removed from the agenda because they're no longer necessary. The information has been provided.
Oh, I see. Okay.
File for those agenda items.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point, I do need someone to approve the agenda. Put that language in there of removing...
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. Move to approve the order of business, Slide 28, 2020. Electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, excuse me, virtual meeting. This is with the removal and receipt note and file of item 8B and 9A as submitted.
It's approved.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Next, we have electronically held regular meeting of July 14, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I move that we approve the electronically... I'm sorry, the minutes from July 14, 2020. Electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting, is outlined in item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is public hearing and comment on agenda items. We ask you limit it to two minutes. Any comments on agenda items? Now, I will have George and Lynn help me.
I have Michelle.
Got it. Here it is. Can you get me now? I'm gonna unmute the page. It's right here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi. I... First one is item 7B, grass bids. I'm gonna quote from the letter. It says, "Recommend artistic landscaping. This company has had zero complaints in regards to the quality of their work," unquote. I'm gonna refer council back to a complaint that I made regarding 5666 Granley Park, where it had two foot of weeds at the location. I did some research and found that the ordinance department itself issued two separate violations in the September, October timeframe last year. I have the citation numbers with E 2019-11064, and the other one was E 2019-09704. The other is, I believe, I'm not sure on this one, St. Albert. If that's one that the company that cooks our... This company that cooks the company for the city is St. Albert. This July 23 of this year, there was grass falling all over Indianapolis. The second comment is on item 9G, the purchase of a 2020 Caterpillar 926M motor. The total cost after turning in the old one is $135,974.90. I would just, again, like to reiterate what I said last meeting, which was after the three trillion plus the additional...
Yeah.
Looks like we're gonna be spending from the federal government. We're probably gonna use a lot of revenue sharing. And I don't know if that's projected in the city budget or not, but I would strongly advise the council members before we spend money that perhaps we may not have in this budget, and again, on next year, we very carefully look at the items that we're gonna spend these high-ticket items on and make certain that we don't have redundant items or items that we can hold off spending on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna stop, and I'm gonna ask everybody, George and Lynn, to please mute anybody that's coming into the meeting because they're not automatically muted, and we're getting a lot of feedback tonight.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Okay, because I've been going through the time to mute. So, okay, we will go on. Is there any other public comments and comment on agenda items? And I'm gonna ask people at home to please mute yourselves because there's a lot of background noise in here right now, or I have to mute everybody. Okay, any other comments on agenda items?
Council Chair, there's... There is one.
Well, I got really nice... N I C I O L. I'm sorry. Hold on, let me unmute you. Go ahead.
Yeah, David Neisler again with Eager Bieber Lawn Care Landscaping. Once again, using my daughter's cutter. So, I'm just back to say that, once again, I'm the lowest responsive bidder, willing, waiting, and ready to execute the contract. I've done it in the past. I don't understand why council doesn't see the picture. Once again, it's your fiduciary responsibility to save the citizens of our city money. I just don't understand why repeatedly, for six years, this contract has been steered time and time again to one contractor when they have not been the lowest, and there's other contractors that can execute. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other comment at this time?
There is one, Michelle.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Let me unmute her. Michelle, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to comment on agenda item 7B. I'm Michelle, and I work in the ordinance and animal control office, and I would like to ask the council to please stop considering Eager Bieber for the grass contract. I sent an email to all the council on 6/24 with some examples of the poor quality of work that they do. I also included information on numerous residents complaining about the type of work that they do. I worked with this company in the summers of 2014, 2015, and 2016, and because the paperwork they turned in did not match up, and I provided some examples in your email, it's very time-consuming to try to figure out what pictures are actually supposed to be and what paperwork they go with. I can share some of those documents with you now if you would like to see them again.
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Just for clarification for Michelle, and I did get the emails, but I just want to make sure of clarification. Are you speaking as a resident? Are you speaking as a representative of the ordinance department? Because it will make a difference as to how, at least for me, how I look at it.
I am not a city resident. I am speaking on behalf of my position in the ordinance department. I'm the one who processes all the grass paperwork, everything that goes out and everything that comes in.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Chair? I never did receive any of that paperwork.
It's not comment, but Michelle didn't receive the report, and I don't think I did either. I'd have to look back. Yeah. Any other comments from the agenda items and council members? We can't comment back on it. Anybody else? Yeah, at this time, we will move on with our meeting. Next item on agenda is public transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constant?
I move that fund transfers and current claims, 6-1 to 6/23, be put on the table for discussion and vote. Support.
Support by who? Oh, Councilwoman Abdullah? Okay, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Okay, so item 617 for Plant Moran. There's something on here. It said, "For professional services rendered related to accounting assistance as detailed in our engagement letter dated January 8, 2020." I'm not... I don't recall that letter. What is that letter? It's charged for $3,229.85.
Hold on. Let me unmute the mayor.
Okay. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. This came up at a prior meeting. If you will recall, when the auditors presented the audit, they also talked about some management letter items. And there was a question in regards to... This is... Can you get him out?
Yes, I know. This is the professional. I'm muted at...
Okay. And during that discussion, Plant Moran offered to provide some assistance to the controller as it related to some of the audit adjustment items. And the council had concurred in it. It was in the letter of engagement by Plant Moran, and that's what it relates to.
Madam Chair? I don't recall it. Can we get a copy of it? I mean, I don't need it now, but if we can get a copy of that sent to... At least to myself. I don't know if the council members are interested in it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ray Muscat, go ahead, please.
Council Chair, thank you very much. I... I... You know, same sentiment with Mr. Bazey. My understanding, we spent almost $70,000 doing this stuff. I don't ever remember saying... I remember us wanting to get rid of the deficiencies that Plant Moran has outlined for years and years on our... At our audits, but I don't think I ever said yes to them just coming in and cleaning all of this up. Okay? And if we did, I want to see the motion number and how we all voted on it. Because I don't believe we did. This is an extra money that we're spending on an audit. They're getting ready for an audit to do an audit, and I don't like that because I don't believe we ever voted on it. And if we did, I'd like to see the motion, the motion number, when it was, and who voted, and... And that's it.
Yeah, I also have concerns. They're supposed to be independent auditors. If the books that they're going to be auditing, they would lose their status as an independent auditor. You can't audit the books that you've fixed and be independent.
Yeah.
Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know if I'm muted or not. Hopefully not.
No.
This is not to prepare the audit. What it is, is that they indicated that certain post-closing adjustments were not done as efficiently and properly as they could be. So, they're assisting our staff, and with that assistance, they're learning how to do it so we don't have this problem in the future. It's more of an education on how to perform certain of these post-closing adjustments. The other thing that I did is to create better understanding and backup in the department. I have both the deputy controller and the controller working on these. So, we have backup, and we have a clear understanding of how the post-closing adjustments are to go. But you'll find in the engage... In the motion for the engagement letter, I'm almost positive it was included in there.
Okay, Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, I don't remember us to spend an extra $70,000 or whatever it was. I don't remember that. And the other thing is, and I don't know if this is an oversight, and I was meaning to call our comptroller, but on 6-3 E&amp;N Cement, there was no budget before spending the money. But on 6-4 for the same thing, there was. And I don't know, was that a... Just a hiccup?
Would they like to answer that? Councilman Muscat, who are you directing that question to?
Well, whoever, I believe the comptroller, she would know.
Here she is on the last page. She doesn't have her picture up, so I'll put her on the last page.
I just unmuted her.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello? Hi, this is the comptroller. I don't have all of the packet in front of me, but we are working within two budget seasons right now. So, if the item on number four has a dollar amount and the item on number three doesn't, it's because as of July 1st, we don't have a current water budget right now. So, if the invoice was for services after July 1st, there would be no budget. If it was for services prior to July 1st, there would still be a budget. I'm not saying that for a fact because I don't have the actual... The paperwork there, but that would be my answer for that. I can look into it tomorrow, but that would be the reasoning.
If you could send me an email on that tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you very kindly.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion on current transfers and current claims?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Be it that there's a question on the Plant Moran one, I'd like to suggest that maybe we table that one until we get the answers and then vote on it at the next council meeting, maybe.
Does everybody agree on that?
Yeah.
I do too. So, this Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Councilman Wenzel, do you agree? Okay. Would somebody like to reintroduce the motion minus that item number?
Who made the motion?
Robert Constant, I believe.
Councilman Constant, can you please make the motion again and remove that?
Yeah, it's item 16... Or claim 16 and 17, or just 16?
16 and 17.
17.
Yeah, I move that we approve fund transfers and current claims, but that item 16 and 7... Claim 16 and 17 that we table for further discussion and backup on... And documentation on what the expenses from Plant Moran were for.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. I have comptroller Vance. Did you want to make a...
Yeah, I just wanted to. So, number 17 is for the... Number 16 isn't that? Neither part of 16 is for that. That's for evaluating the water budget and the road budgets, those two, for 16. Item 17 is the additional work by Plant Moran. So, 17 is the one that you're questioning, not 16.
Councilman Bazey?
Again, you know, somebody had a concern in the study session as why one auditor was approved, one was not. I think, you know, that stuff has not come in front of us for approval. You know, I know they do our audit, our annual audit, but not, you know, these little things that, you know, keeps popping up at every meeting. So, we need... I... For myself, I need to see that as well.
I would like to see it. I would like to see it. So, we're moving both of those at this time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of bids. This is Chief of Staff Laslow, bid awards appraisal services for 2016 PDM PJ 05 grant for a home acquisition.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Christina Laslow, Chief of Staff. The city council approved the request for proposal for appraisal services for the Hanover and Courier properties as it relates to 2016 PDM PJ 05 grant for home acquisition. And it was thought out for bids, and it was two bidders. And she's asking the city council approve the proposal from Judy and Associates for the amount of $395 per home. In addition, she's asking that the city council approve the attached agreement drafted by Assistant Corporation Counsel Harry Keller-Garacus. Thank you. And authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign it. It's outlined in item 7A.
Support Keller-Garacus.
So's Greeks.
Excuse me. It's support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey?
Again, I'm not comfortable in voting for this one. And the reason why is we've had some issues with this particular company in the previous FEMA grant. So, I don't know why we went to the same one. I know residents have came and voiced their concern over the appraisers, and I know there's a bunch of other appraisals in the area that they charge the same amount. I don't know why it wasn't open to other appraisers, why this one in particular.
Council Chair?
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilman Bazey has the floor. Christie Laslow, go ahead, please.
Um, yeah. Councilman Bazey, like I said, I emailed both... Or the city council twice. We received two bids. We rebid it, and we received another two bids. As it relates with the issues with the appraisers, there was an issue with the former appraiser that the city council went with Jumana Jude and Associates. The person that came up and was most vocal did not have his home appraised by Jude and Associates on... And you can look at that, the one person in Hanover. The second thing, both Ken at Accupraise and Jumana Jude at... Jude and Associates were familiar with the grant. None of those appraisals were approved outright. They all had questions, and he had to be revised, but they are both familiar with the grant. Again, I bid it twice. It's taken an extra week. I asked council... I know on... Councilman Abdullah said he tried to get people... Councilman Bazey, you said you know appraisers. It was open to them. I actually emailed council twice to get more people to bid. If we would have had three bidders to begin with, I would have been coming a week sooner. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Councilman Constant and then Councilman Muscat. Go ahead, Councilman Constant.
Well, yeah, I just asked for clarification from Councilman Bazey when he says we've had problems with the company. Was he referring to Jude and Associates, the appraisers, or to somebody else? Councilman Baz... Were you referring to Jude and Associates as...
I'm not mentioning anybody's name in this meeting, but I can tell you, whoever's referenced in this letter, we've had issues in the past. And I remember vividly that there was... There was residents other than that one that was referred to. They had issues with the appraiser, and also with like two, three different properties that were actually comping, which was out of the area versus another house they were using was way out of the area, and they were using the same homes. That's all I said. I'm not gonna reference anybody's name at this meeting, but I'm voting no for this one, obviously.
Understood. All right. I'm familiar with Jude and Associates. They've... Jumana was a member of this council. They've done appraisals for a long, long time. I've always found them. I've used them on occasion and found they did a good job.
Okay. We have Councilman Muscat next, please.
I hit the button by mistake, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone else before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. We need to take a roll call. Councilman Constant, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey, how do you vote?
No.
Councilwoman Abdullah, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Wenzel, how do you vote? Councilman Wenzel, you're... I gotta unmute you. You gotta unmute yourself, honey. Go ahead.
Go ahead, mute. No.
Okay, Councilwoman Malinowski, next. Well, votes no. Motion fails. Next item on the agenda...
Wait, Council Chair?
Councilwoman Abdullah?
So, obviously, the appraisals are needed for us to move forward in getting some of this grant money back. So, at this particular point, the motion fails, and I respect that. I mean, a vote is a vote. Democracy spoke. But with that being the case, are we asking Christina Laslow to go back out for bids again?
I would do that, yes.
Christina, is that doable? And are we still within the timeframe for the grant?
I can continue to go out for bids, but like I emailed council, and I'm sorry I sound frustrated, but Councilman Bazey, you voiced your concern over this. You said appraisers, and nobody else bid. I bid on this twice. So, I will go out for bid again. And Councilman Bazey, have your friend bid pass.
I don't have any friends that who are appraisers. I just said that we should go out. They should go out. People should know.
Well, I did twice. I don't know what else I'm supposed to do.
All right, we need to mute somebody in here. I don't know who we can hear, but we get... If you're half part of the council, please mute yourself. You're departing the meeting. Councilman Muscat?
Ms. Laslow, if you don't mind, could I do a little bit of investigating and see if I can find any other appraisers and send you their names?
Um, Councilman Muscat, I can't reach out to them. That's why I reached out to council. Council needs to have them. These appraisers, like, it's bad hard to fill out a bid, but...
Okay, I understand.
Two bids I received was I reached out to Jumana Jude, did some appraisal work for the residents, on the residents behalf. And then I emailed all the council to look for other appraisals. So, I can ask people to bid, but I can't solicit.
I understand. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinance enforcement.
Chair? Corporation counsel had a stand-up on the other one.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I didn't see you there. I'm gonna mute yourself.
Okay, very, very good. I was just going to say that the problem had ended up being with another company, not Jumana Jude's company, with respect to the appraisals. It was a specific company on Telegraph, since someone doesn't want to mention the name, and that was what was the problem for the state. So, if there was any lack of clarity on that, my... You know...
Okay, we already voted on it. We're moving on to the next item. At this time. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance enforcement and animal control director McIntyre, bid awards for non-city-owned lots, grass cutting.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Director of Ordinance and Animal Control chap McIntyre requesting... He's got a list of companies that bid on the grass program and their prices. And two lowest proposals were Eager Bieber Lawn Care and Landscaping and Artistic Landscaping and Lawn Service. And both of these companies have worked with the city of Dearborn Heights in the past and are a part of the grass program. With two companies, he is recommending artistic landscaping. And with two companies, he's recommending artistic landscaping. Uh, according to him, this, this company's had zero complaints in regards to quality of their work, and it always provided proper backup and photographs. And, uh, Corporation Council has reviewed and approved the attached agreement. Therefore, he's recommending that we approve artistic landscaping and lawn service, uh, with the option to renew for not more than two consecutive terms, as outlined in item seven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Or Councilman Abdullah, you made the voting first.
Okay, just, uh, for clarification for, uh, our ordinance director McIntyre. Uh, the term, are we speaking of one-year terms? When it says up to two terms, are we talking about each term is one year? Just for clarification. Is he on here?
No, I think, I saw him. I don't know where he find him. He's probably muted. Oh, here's to recommend. Um, you gotta unmute yourself in your own.
Yeah, so the, uh, you're, you're making reference to the consecutive terms?
Right.
Yeah, it would be one year.
Each, each term is one year, correct?
Right, it's a two-year contract with the consideration of an extension, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Muscat. Oh, sorry, Councilman Bazzi.
Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, again, I'm not comfortable with this one, and I voiced my opinion in the past. Uh, two, two, two things. One is, uh, you know, you, you know, somebody keeps coming back, you know, even from the administration, you're backed a particular company by name, and even DPW had the same issue, you know, in the past. You know, we asked for DPW to come and quote the same job, and that was never presented to us. But all of a sudden, you know, the same company keeps getting awarded that contract. And, you know, we asked how much it would cost for DPW, even with overtime, what would it cost to do that job? That's one. That was never presented. You know, they were, they were belittled at that time. They were asked, they were not asking for overtime, but that's another story. But the second one is right now with the pandemic, you know, we don't know if we're gonna get all the money from the, from the government, from the federal or even state. But yet, you know, we're, we're bidding, we're accepting a contract which is much higher than another, other bidders. So I'm not comfortable again with this. I don't know why we keep going with the same company. And especially right now, we need, I mean, we're strapped for cash, you know, we don't even know what's gonna be like in the next year or so. And now we're just wasting money. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I really had a question. Linda, did you start, start kicking something?
Um, yes, in the motion, it was not written in the letter, but we, can we include in the motion, uh, to, um, for the mayor and city clerk to, um, sign agreement on behalf of the city?
I'll.
Councilman Abdullah?
I'll amend the motion to have the mayor and the Corporation Council, I'm sorry, the clerk sign the agreement. City clerk sign the agreement, as outlined in item seven B.
Support.
All support, Councilman Coniston.
Thank you.
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, you know, I, I know Artistic's a good company, but I, I, I feel that Eager Beaver is just a good company too. Now, I don't know about these complaints. I hear about them, but I didn't receive the letter. I didn't see any pictures. And we're, we're saying, you know, we're, we, we always go with the lowest bid, and now we're not going with the lowest bid. So that, that's troublesome to me, okay? Um, I, I don't know if Corporation Council has, has reviewed the contract, if it can be, um, terminated with cause or without cause at any time. Um, so, I mean, if we went with somebody else and they did give us trouble, what do we do? Uh, and that's a question, I guess, for Mr. Miyaki to answer. Uh, and that's my feelings on the whole thing.
Thank you. Um.
Can I get the question answered from Mr. Miyaki?
Mr. Miyaki, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I believe it's a term contract, and we would always have the ability to terminate a, even a term contract with cause. But the ability to prove cause is not necessarily always easy with a term contract. So, um, yes, if they default on the contract, if they violate the contract, if they breach the contract in some material way, yeah, we could do that, or we could end up making it clear, uh, what cause would end up being, which is typically probably the better way to address it, because really it wasn't drafted with the idea of us having, um, an easier way to be able to, uh, terminate the contract. So.
Don't we normally do that, though? Why wouldn't we have done this in this case?
It's for one year. I mean, it's a shorter contract. Um, so, I mean, we normally don't end up having contracts for like one season and then have it so that it can just be stopped or, um, ended, uh, really quickly.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Um, I'd like to comment next. I, I do believe that we should go with the lowest bid. Um, apparently six years ago, we had struggled, but we changed employees and we seen procedures, and I think we need to give them another chance. Um, they may, and surprise us. And I think since they are the lowest, they deserve it. That's why they have a bidding process. Um, like I said, six years, things change, procedures change, employees change, management changes. I'd say give them a chance. Next we have Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, uh, remind everyone that the City Council doesn't always give the bids to the lowest bidder. Case in point is a major concrete job that we gave to a bidder that was higher than the lowest bidder. So just because of the lowest bidder doesn't mean that, uh, we automatically award them a contract.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Yeah, this time we're going to take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we're gonna have to take a roll call on that. Councilman Coniston, how are you voting on this?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Bazzi, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Abdullah, how are you voting on this? Uh-oh, Councilman, um, Abdullah, you're muted.
No.
Councilman Hicks Clayton, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Wenzel, how are you voting on this?
Yes.
Nolanowski Maxwell is voting no. That fails. Um, at this one, I think everybody sort of agrees that we should be going with the lowest bidder. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, do you need a motion for that?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, either or, uh, Councilman Bazzi or myself, it doesn't matter. Um, I wanna make the motion move that City Council award the, um, the agreement to the lowest bidder, which is Eager Beaver. As, um, the same agreement is attached, as outlined in seven B, and this includes authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazzi. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we're gonna have to take a roll call again. Councilman Coniston, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Muscat, how are you voting on this?
Yes.
Councilman Bazzi, how are you voting on this?
Yes.
Councilman Bazzi, Abdullah, how are you voting on this?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel, how are you voting on this?
No.
Nolanowski Maxwell votes yes. If passes, uh, Eager Beaver will get the contract. Next item on the agenda, we have DPW Director Salmy bid, request for bids for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one street construction program.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Director of Public Works John Salmy, uh, which has reviewed and concur with Wade Trim's letter dated July twentieth, two thousand twenty, to proceed with the preparation of design and plans, specifications for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one street construction program, um, and prepare plans and specifications for the, and acquire the necessary permits and advertise for bids in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand five hundred, is outlined in item seven C.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzi?
Okay, so I'm curious, uh, I know it says, uh, permits and also advertise for bids, uh, is that? I mean, it says do not exceed ninety-eight thousand five hundred, but what is the actual cost? And, you know, they're pretty much, you know, telling us what our department can do. So why, why were they charging us that much money for, just for, for permits or sending out for bid?
Okay, Director Salmy, can you unmute and answer that? Thank you.
Certainly, thank you. So it's not just to go out, it's to do the design, the specifications, the contract management, the inspection, and the bidding process and the bid documents.
So for the inspection, if anything happens with, or any, any issue with whatever contract that they, or we chose, are we gonna hold Wade Trim liable for anything, any issues like we've had in the past on some streets? Who's gonna be liable for the repair or answering, uh, the, the residents' concerns if there's issues with any construction on those streets outlined?
Well, there's concerns. We address them with the contractor who built the road. But if. And we get resolution, and we get resolution to, to the satisfaction of the complainant.
Okay, so the company outlined here, Wade Trim, so if they're doing inspection, I mean, is, is it gonna go past, if they're gonna pass the inspection, so who, who are we going after? Wade Trim or the company that actually did the work?
Well, the company that did the work. Wade Trim does the inspection. They, they would be holding the contractor accountable. That hasn't, as it has been in the past here for several years. This is not something new.
No, I know, but we've had concerns in the past. That's why I'm asking.
Well, and the short time I've been here, any concerns that have been, uh, brought to my attention have been addressed, uh, immediately, and we have a complete resolution.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah?
I'm Chair. I, I'd like to add on Councilman Bazzi's concern. And it's a very legitimate concern he's got there because, this is for Director John Salmy, because if you, uh, on the property, like for example, the Street Fairwood, uh, I went and looked at personally, and I know some of the residents had a problem with it, and this would be Fairwood just north of Ford Road, um, south of Haas. On that particular street, there was an issue, like Councilman Bazzi's rec, is, is suggesting, you know, possibly with the design, where right in the center of the street, you had a, a bad gap, bad gap. And, and, and in my living, I'm always around different streets showing houses. I've never seen something like this. And also at the curb, there was, um, too short of a, of a space between the, the curb and the actual asphalt itself to where the water will overflow onto the residence easements. So the suggestion that Councilman Bazzi is suggesting is a very legitimate concern. I, I agree with him. I think it's an excellent thing that he was mentioned, because it, it says here to, request authorization from the city to prepare design plans and specifications. It just maybe, and again, I'm not an expert in this, but just maybe the specifications or the design were wrong on Fairwood and could possibly be wrong on any potential street, so.
Right. And, and, you know, I wasn't really a part, part of that program, and I'm not trying to pass the buck, but when you start to overlay roads, uh, asphalt over concrete and don't do new curb and gutter, those are some of the effects that you get. So it's been my position going forward that, um, we get away from the overlays and we do total rebuilds and we don't have those type of issues. So as you see the Lila Lanes and the, and some of the other ones up off Ann Arbor Trail, those are total reconstruction. Um, that's a pers, personal preference. It's also a financial, uh, it's a lot more cost to rebuild a road than it is just to, you know, patch it and then put an overlay on the top of it. When you put an overlay on, you run into the issues of obviously lowering the curb height, if you will, because you're putting more height on the road surface itself. So, and that was the contractor that the council, uh, had some issues with. And I think Councilman Wenzel brought up that, uh, the first contract that I went to award was that contractor's lowest bid, and the council decided they didn't want to work with them anymore, and they went to the next highest bidder. So, um, it's my recommendation in the future that we, you know, if we're gonna build a road, we should total rebuild it and not do overlays if, if we can avoid them. But it is, you know, sometimes it's cost prohibitive to do that also, so.
Okay, but can you keep an eye out for, for these types of potential problems, if you don't mind? Because that's really more, you know, your world and Plant Moran's world. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments in regards to this item on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers request for bids for the Justice Center marquee replacement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I move council authorize, uh, to purchase and pay, uh, for a scrolling marquee in front of the Justice Center. Uh, and that would be entirely paid for by the Tax Increment Finance Authority, as outlined in seven B.
Support.
For the Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Um, I have a concern that I'd, I'd like to speak about with, uh, Chief Myers on this, because there's been multiple, multiple different places or entities that have put these types of marquees in place, and they're almost not legible. Like, for example, one at the fire department, and I drive by that all the time. Unless you're really, really paying attention, you, you, it's very easy to miss. And same thing with other places that put some of these up. And, and from what I understand, it's something to do with the lettering, the size of the lettering, the number of dots. I'm not an expert in that field, but I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be wasting money on something that's very difficult to read. So, I don't know who's talking to me.
So, so if, asking me, I'm not an expert in video displays either. That's why we've actually, this is actually the request to go out for bids. Um, and in those, in those bids, actually goes through the pixels, what's more legible. It talks about how many pixels per square feet. We, we've actually put together, working with, um, a, a, a vendor that actually understands this type of thing, what's more legible. Um, it's a, it's, it's a delicate balance between distraction and notification. We don't want to distract people on the roadway, but we want to be able to notify them, and we're working with that vendor. Our, our sign's seventeen years old. It's the old dot style. It really serves no purpose other than put words up there. Um, we're working with them to get something that's going to be not only for public service, but for Amber Alerts, emergency situations, COVID response as of right now. But really, we aren't the experts. That's why we're going out for the RFP to try to get a sign that's going to not only last, but be, like you said, readable and performance duties like we wanted to do.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilman Wenzel, go ahead, please. You need to unmute yourself, Councilman.
He's muted.
Okay, there you go. Okay, now this sign, is there more involved than just the sign itself? Is there gonna be some more, uh, foundation work to be done? It's an extra cost. And, and is this a hundred percent covered by Tifa?
So, two questions. One is, it's to redo the entire marquee, so that would include the, the structure of it. And then two, like, that's actually in the RFP, if you, I believe, if you, if you, when you review it, you'll see that in there. And number two, yes, it is entirely funded by Tifa. Um, we had debated on possibly using it under some federal funding, under the, because it's going to be a information, uh, emergency management type thing for, um, the COVID. But speaking with Tifa, the best way we can go about making sure it's funded fully is through the Tifa. And, um, Tom from Tifa, Mr. Tom there, has done a great job for us in the past, and he, uh, he stepped up to the plate this time and, uh, offered to help fund that project.
All right, good deal. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions directly related to this item number? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Park and Recreation Director Hadad, that's return of bid bond to Elite Sports.
Council Chair.
Yeah, Muscat?
Uh, I move council concur with, uh, Director Hadad on returning the bid bond to Elite Sports. They have finished the renovations of the Canfield Ice Arena and have their CFO and, uh, it's a beautiful building. And.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Okay, you have a question directly related to this?
No, just a quick statement. Just wanted to congratulate Elite Sports, beautiful building, great addition to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. In the future, I'm gonna ask that we teach the questions, because they're going so long. It leaves comments till, um, comments from the council at the end. Okay, at this time, is there any other questions directly related to this item? Okay, all those are voted aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Reports from Mayor, we have the General Government Civil Service Commission appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Mayor Dan Puleco on the appointment of Mr. Douglas Bailey to fill the vacancy on the General Government Commission. This is a partial term that will expire on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any question directly related to this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzi?
I just, I'm curious, uh, when is the administration gonna update the appointees, uh, by the mayor? Because I looked at the site, a lot of them is out of date.
Mayor, would you like to answer that? All right, hold on, man. I'm trying to unmute. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I certainly always want to find good individuals. If any of the council members here, people that are interested, please, uh.
It's not that question, Madam Chair. The question's, when are we gonna up, update the website to show who the appointees are by the mayor? Because as of right now, a lot of them are obsolete, or it doesn't have all the appointees on the, the city website.
Well, actually, the updating of that list is the city clerk's responsibility, not the mayor's.
Thank you. Any other questions directly related to this agenda item? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Reports from City Officials, we have Investment of Fund Report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Caston?
I move that we receive note and file the funds report from Plant Moran for June thirtieth, twenty twenty, as outlined in item nine B.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the Brownfield Administrator, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one proposed Brownfield budget.
Councilor Chair?
Madam Chair?
I move council chair approve the proposed Brownfield budget adopted by the Brownfield Board on July eighth, two twenty, as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Caston, is there any questions related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Chief of Staff Laswell, installation and payment for Microsoft Office six five.
Madam Chair? I move we approve the installation and payment for Microsoft Office Suite three sixty-five, as outlined in nine D, and approve payment for.
Support by Councilman Abella, is there any questions?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Well, number one, I don't understand why we got a contract with Dearborn to do our IT work, now we gotta get a third party involved. And, as I look on page seven of the financial summary here, I added all this stuff up, and it comes up to thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So, I don't know what, what all of this is, the difference in the amount of monies that we're seeing here. Seventeen thousand, five hundred, with a payment of three thousand, eight hundred and twelve. And then I, I look over on the end of this, and it's thirty-five, I added them up, thirty-five thousand, one thirty-nine, so it's on page seven of eight.
Chris Tito, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm scrolling to get to that right now, on. So, if you look at that, there's a down payment that's due, that you take that, oh. I can't answer the Dearborn thing, on. So, the email migration is fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty. The consulting support services is two thousand, three hundred and twenty. Twenty-five percent, gentlemen, twenty-five percent of that is due to begin with, the three thousand, eight, twelve, fifty. Remainder is due after, so if you add up those two middle ones, they'll come to the same amount as if you add up the first and second one, or first and last one, do you understand?
Yeah, I understand, but what's the thirty-eight, twelve for? And then the thirteen, seven, fifty-seven, balance due upon migration.
Okay.
This tells us not to exceed seventeen thousand, five seventy, but it's really thirty-five thousand, one thirty-nine.
No, it's fifteen thousand, two fifty, plus two thousand, three hundred and twenty. They're asking for a twenty-five percent deposit. Dearborn and I have tried to do estimates for over a year, but as employees change and needs change, and with the COVID thing going on right now, less and less people need actual licenses for desktops, and most of them just need licenses for the employees, and that's cheaper. So that's why it's an amount not to exceed. But the remainder, so that balance to do, let me start again. Three thousand, eight hundred, twelve dollars and fifty cents will be paid immediately if council approves it.
Right.
Once they complete their migration, it's not going to exceed on a total of the seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, those two middle numbers. So, it's going to be, whatever that amount is, minus the three thousand, eight hundred and twelve fifty that will be remained, that will be due upon completion. So this thirteen, seven, fifty, seven, fifty, is the highest estimate possible.
Thank you. Any further questions directly related to this item number?
Madam Chair? Maybe if, if the council's not ready to vote on this now, we can hear from either Doug Felkamp or Tarek regarding, like, why, for example, you know, Dearborn, its IT could not do this migration. I know with emails, it's tricky, and especially with the Microsoft Outlook, but, you know, maybe we need to hear from.
Councilman, we've got a motion, we need to vote on that, and then we can look at other options.
Understood.
Okay, any further questions directly related to this? Next on the table is for installation and payment of Microsoft Office three sixty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Have it. Next item on the agenda is PPW Director Sell me, twenty twenty, Water Main replacement program, Joy Road and Silver Lane Certificate for Payment Number Three, and Change Order Number One approval.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move we concur with BPW Director John Sell me on the Certificate for Payment Number Three and Change Order Number One approval. The department is requesting approval of Change Order Number One, and Certificate of Payment Number Three, in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Certificate of Payment Number Three includes contract increase reflected in Change Order One, as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Caston, is there any questions directly related to this item number? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Sell me, two thousand nineteen, CDVG Water Main Program for Clifford Williams and Castle Avenue, Certificate for Payment Number Four, in Change Order Number One approval.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, move to concur with Director of Public Works, John Sell me, and approves Change Order Number One, and Certificate for Payment Number Four, in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Certificate for Payment Number Four includes a contract decrease in reflecting Change Order Number One of thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, as submitted in nine F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any questions directly related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Sell me, Water and Highway Purchase and Payment One, twenty twenty Caterpillar nine-six M loader, less trade-in.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move city council approve John Sell me's request to purchase one, two-twenty Caterpillar nine-twenty-six wheel loader, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven, nine-seventy-four, ninety, less twenty-two thousand of a trade-in, and the two thousand K, six-twenty-one, loader of one hundred and thirty-five, thousand, nine-seventy-four. The purchase is made through the Sourcewell Program, which Dearborn Heights is a member. Purchase requested is a budgeted item in both the water and highway capital outlay budgets. The accounts will be charged equally, are five ninety-two, five thirty-seven, nine eighty-one, and one oh one, four forty, nine eighty-one, as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Caston, is there any questions?
Councilor Chair? Madam Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Mr. Sell me, how poor is that two thousand, six case?
Oh, so we have, actually, we have two, two loaders, we have a two thousand, and a two thousand six. The city hasn't bought a loader in fourteen-plus years. The two thousand is not roadworthy, the two thousand six is not roadworthy, roadworthy either, and we're just pouring money into these for repairs. We did also price the case out, the case was another thirty thousand dollars higher, so that's why we're recommending the cap. The wheel loader is used for multiple functions within the operation of both highway and water, specifically on the road in the neighborhood, so big trees, large stumps, any type of large debris that we need to remove. In the yard operations, it's used for loading salt, loading wood chips out, spoils out, stockpiling dirt, stuff like that, so, again, the vehicles haven't been purchased. You bought one twenty years ago, and you bought one fourteen years ago, they have definitely met their life expectancy. It's my recommendation that, you know, this, I mean, this is a ten, fifteen-year purchase, right? So, I won't be back here next year asking for another, and we'll use the old six, for, to the best of our abilities, but at some point, we gotta quit throwing money at broken-down equipment that just continues to throw, we're just throwing the money away, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Councilman Abella?
I think it was somebody before me, I'm not sure who it was.
Go ahead.
So, Council Chair, got a question for the, for the mayor, and this is with due respect to Director John Sell me, who I know is not only very reputable, very transparent, and very professional, but, so it's not a reflection on you directly, but I do have a concern in this particular case, whenever you have an item like this for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, you know, and then the mayor concurs, the question I want to understand, the process of concurring, so I presume it starts with Director Sell me saying, I need this hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar equipment. When I see concurrents on there, I make a presumption that the mayor has seen this particular item, and, and even though he's not an expert in that particular field, like John Sell me would be, sees the definite need for that. Is that the case? Because it really concerns me when it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar item. I'd hate to have anybody for that matter, even if it was reversed, all the way around, just concurs just because he's one of your directors. I'd like to get a clarification as to how that process works, in this case and in your case, thank you.
Yeah, how it works is that the department heads will make these requests. Oftentimes, I go out, look at the particular equipment, we talk about it, the age is a factor, and also, the kind of service that this product gives our department, and how important it is. And especially in light of the fact that there's a definite concern about how much money is gonna be available, and I watched the governor at two o'clock today, and I had a discussion with Debbie Dingle on regards to the federal legislation. Right now, I believe this is something that's very much needed, and I think we should go ahead and spend it, or spend to purchase it, but there will come a time, if money starts to look like it's getting short, that I will not concur these to these, and they will not end up on the agenda.
So, it is never concurred upon, and I'm just being blunt, just based on the fact that director puts something in front of you?
Not, that is correct, and it doesn't matter who the director is, everything is questioned.
And this is a generic question across all directors, I'm not specifying John Sell me, thank you.
Exactly.
And if I may, and if I may, Councilman, this is, this, in my opinion, is this not a wish list item? This is, this is a very critical piece to the operation. I'm also very sensitive to what's going on budget-wise. We're looking at a lot of things internally, how we operate. So, I mean, if I didn't think we need this, I wouldn't be standing up here defending it.
Could I make a request for a director, and whenever I have items in front of me at one thousand, and two thousand, three thousand, I'm sure, you know, it's not as big of a decision. But on something like this, maybe in the future, just for, just a third eye, maybe send us a picture of it. Just, again, just as a third eye, in case it raises some questions that we need to delve into a little bit further, I think would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, I, again, you know, I'm not comfortable in voting for something that high right now at this time, because of, I mean, I think we can wait, maybe later on in a budget year, to purchase this, to see what we're gonna be in the next few months.
Thank you. Any further questions directly related to this question, and to this item? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 No.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to take a roll call, Councilman Caston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Abella, how do you vote?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wenzel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melowski-Massol, I vote yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Director Sell me, approval to dispose used equipment.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, move to concur with Director of Public Works, John Sell me, and dispose of the listed vehicles from the inventory, is listed in nine H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Caston, is there any questions directly related to this item?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I think I probably already know the answer to this, but Director Sell me, there probably is no value in any of these, or any scrapping, or anything that we can recoup with these items, correct?
Oh, yeah, no, we will put those out to bid for, yeah, for, for sale. There is some value to them, there's a site that we, that we use, that's no cost to the city, that disposes of used municipal equipment, so that's what we've done in the past, and we've been fairly successful with that.
Oh, okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any further questions directly related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan, commission to purchase water rescue equipment and tools.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Caston?
I move we concur with our Fire Chief, Dave Brogan, and approve the purchase of the water equipment and hand tools from Fire Store. The cost is three thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, three thousand, thirty-nine dollars to be covered by the MEDC grant, with the remaining two hundred and forty-eight dollars to be paid out of capital outlay, as outlined in nine I.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any questions directly related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, we have Police Chief Myers, purchase and payment of CN canister filter and mask carry pouch.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abella?
I move that we concur with Chief of Police Mark Myers, requesting purchase and payment for the following, twenty-eight MSA Millennium CN canister dash filters, pack of six, forty-four Millennium mask carry pouch, and this equipment is full face protection for the eyes, nose, and mouth, that protects law enforcement personnel from respiratory hazards associated with COVID-nineteen, in a total amount of sixteen thousand, eight seventy-six. And this does not include shipping and handling, which will be added, but not in the quote, and he'll be asking for reimbursement from FEMA emergency grant, as outlined in item nine J.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion or related to this?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abella?
Chief Myers, just wanted to clarify, if you don't get the grant, we are paying for it as a city, is that correct?
So, we are actually gonna, there's two revenue, two revenue sources we can go for. One is through the FEMA grant, and then through the law enforcement, through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. If you remember, at the last meeting, I bought fifty-four thousand dollars, which was the first seven-eighths of this purchase. They've now opened up about another fifteen thousand, so between those two, will apply for that grant, either the FEMA grant will reimburse, or the Bureau of Justice Assistance will purchase these final carriers and the replacement canisters to give everyone in the agency what they need. So, it will be paid for through one of those two grants, it's just whichever one we can attain first, and, and secure.
Reason I was asking, is it not, I mean, because obviously, for the protection of our officers, especially during this COVID situation, and they're our frontline, and they meet people pretty close, one-on-one, many, many times. Can this be done, and I'm not the final answer, obviously, maybe the controller or whoever can shine in, but can this be purchased now, and they apply for the grant later, through money from the city, and then later on reimbursed by the grant?
That is part of the plan, so the plan is to actually make the purchase, and then through the FEMA grant, that actually, the purchases have to be made first, and then you get reimbursed. Through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, you can do either way, so we're really gonna, it's a race to see which grant we get first. We're going to make the purchase, and then use that money to reimburse, so yeah, that is our plan.
I support that, thank you.
Any other questions directly related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, purchase and payment, implicit bias training.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to concur with Police Chief Mark Meyer, and approve the payment of forty-nine hundred dollars. the payment of $4,900 for implicit bias training as outlined in 9K. And thank you, Chief.
Support.
All those in question directly related?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So I've, I've, I've actually had this similar training. It's, it's a great training, especially for police officers. Just got a question on his.
Madam Chair, can you guys mute whoever?
I don't know who's listening now. Everybody's muted, except for council people.
So that question is, on that one, is every, everybody's gonna have the training and that specified time, the 30 day period?
So yeah, we were able to secure a, a train, under the current circumstances where you can have in-person training. We were able to secure through that company, which was originally $99 an employee. We actually got them down to $49 per employee. So that's not just police officers, that's every dispatcher, every civilian employee. We get, they're going to be able, they'll have 30 days to finish the, the three hour training. It is an online one. Obviously, you would like to have more interaction in that type of training, but under the current circumstances, this is the next evolution in training for our officers and for our employees. And just another step towards what we've already been doing for the last five years. This is just the continuation of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions directly related to this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers, payment to System Corporation for Maintenance Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah?
I move that we concur with Police Chief Mark Myers, requesting approval for payment to System Corporation, requesting that we pay System for the last year of the five year maintenance agreement in the amount of 15,190. And they are in the process of putting together proposals for other vendors for our HVAC and building needs. And the amount will come out of the police department's contractual services amount, account, sorry, account, as outlined in item 9L.
Support.
For my Councilman Coniston, we need to find out who's interfering. They need to mute themselves.
It's not me.
I'm not, I, hold on, let's take a second here. I'm going to make sure everybody's muted.
I apologize, council. That was probably me. I didn't get it off in time. There were some background noise.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, at least we got it.
I got it.
Council Chair?
No problem. Okay, that was supported by Councilman Muscat. Any questions directly related to this item?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
You know, I keep seeing service agreements, and all the service agreements I see, I don't know what we get for. I, I mean, are we, what are we actually getting? Are we getting labor free? Are we getting parts that, at a very reduced rate? Are we still paying for travel time and things of that nature? I don't know what we get with these service agreements. Because all the service agreements that I've ever been associated with, you got something for them. I mean, that's what you pay the $15,500 upfront. And, and I look at the, the motion that was done in 215, it says without filter changes. Well, hell, that's the best, that's the biggest part of that kind of maintenance for this equipment. So I, I'd like to know what we really get for this stuff.
Chief Myers, would you like to respond?
Sure. So in 2015, there was a service contract that was prepared. It was presented to council. So everything that they got was in that. So anything that you need to see was already in that agreement. So without it sitting in front of me, which was a couple, you know, 20, 30 page document, it outlined everything that you got. But on the broad scope, on your, your maintenance, right now, there's a certain rate for repairs, what the hourly rate is, what the travel time is. The, the actual annual service agreement is the testing of systems, the overhaul, the overall, the redo of the system every year to make sure that what, that's everything's properly functioning. So you're really talking about two different things. You're talking about an annual maintenance agreement where they test all the systems and keep certain, they do test once, or four times a year, actually, I believe it is. And then, then you also talk about what it is if something breaks and what it costs for those. So those are both outlined in the service agreement. Now, as, as Mr. Abdallah said in this, this motion, this is our final year of that contract. We're now working with DPW and putting together the RFP so we can go out. Now, that comes with an asterisk. System has been our, our maintenance group for well over five years now. I think they were actually at before then. So their systems are in place. As we do these RFPs, we're going to be looking at agencies are going to try to implement their own processes during this. So we're looking at potentially additional costs during this RFP. So what, we are, we understand that there's a huge cost to operating that building, and that's why we, we have these service contracts. System has done a great job, but we are going to do our RFPs and go out and see if we can get a better price. But we're also going to have people that have never worked inside that building, which is going to be a learning curve, to say the least, on 17 year old systems.
Council Chair, the question's not answered because, you know, maintenance is my field. And, and I feel that you gotta get something for this. And I don't see what we're, I see the checklist of what they did, but what are we getting out of all of that? Is that, are we still paying for every time they come out to check the compressor, to check voltages, to check load, loads on the motors? Are we still paying for them to come out? That's the, that's the question. And what are we getting for the $15,190? And I guess, I don't know.
I, I guess I would refer you back to the 2015 contract of what you get.
I don't have it. That's 215. I didn't become a councilman until 216. So I, I, you know, I, I'm all favor for a service contract, but I'd like to know what we're getting for the service contract. And I've said this multiple times on different, certain service contracts. Service contracts have got to give you something. That's why they're a service contract. And this, this right here, this, the whole thing here doesn't tell me what we get. All they did was show me what they checked.
Okay, I believe the clerk's office probably holds that, if not the controllers, but we could probably drum up a copy of the service contract from 2015 for you to review, Councilman.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wenzel, next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to back Councilman Muscat on that. I mean, something open ended like that, is, are we paying the deductible for something when they come out for the service contract? You know, I mean, we need it in black and white, because it is, it's, it's not a ton of money, but it's some money that, are we getting our value for the money? Are we getting anything for that? I mean, it might cover nuts and bolts, but they hardly ever do nuts and bolts.
Well, I, once, once again, I would probably send you a copy of the 2015 agreement, and you could see it in black and white for yourself. I mean, it clearly illustrates what you get from, in that contract.
Okay, thank you.
What, what, one more, Council Chair, going back to, and, and why is it that we don't have somebody in building and maintenance that's not trained to do the oil changes, filter changes, belt changes, and things of that nature that should be done either on a bi, you know, annual, biannual, monthly inspections of these units? Because they are very important units, very important. So, I mean, that's up to you and John Selman or however you want to handle that. But that would be my opinion on it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions directly related to this item? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is under ordinances and resolutions. We have Councilwoman Melonowski Maxwell, resolution of the Dearborn Heights City, City Council requesting documents pursuant to Charter Section 6 Dash 13.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the council to approve resolution of Dearborn Heights City Council requesting document pursuant to Charter 6 Dash 13 dated July 28, 2020, as outlined in 11A.
Support.
For my Councilman Muscat, is there any questions directly related to this item?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah?
Is this one referencing the letter from Reiman Group that we spoke about at the last study session?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I'd like to suggest an amendment to this, like we spoke about in the, in the study session. The concerns that I had is mentioned in the study session. There's currently 10 items that they're gonna be looking at in this particular audit. And I have a serious concern, I'll reiterate again, I have a very serious concern that this is not a little open ended, it's very open ended. And, and that can go in many, many directions because they have 10 items they're gonna look at. And each and every one of these items can have many, many sub items. And, and I just believe it's too open ended. So personally, I'd like to put a cap on it.
Okay. Have a motion on the table. We have to address that motion first before we can go amend anything.
Okay. Well, I, I would, then I, okay, then I would like to suggest that we put a cap on this particular resolution.
Hold on, ma'am. May I ask a question? I'm trying to, I mean, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I've always told the city council, if you want a record that the city has, I will provide it to you as long as it exists. All you have to do is ask. The council said they wanted to look at PEG cable funds and the CSO millage, yet most of the items requested have nothing, nothing to do with cable fees and CSO millage. The request just proves me right that this process is politically motivated, and it's an attack on me. Now, many of these items are not under my control. The request should have been made to the right elected official or the board who controls the requested information. I brought this up in committee because I don't have access to a lot of these particular records. And for me to indicate that I'm gonna certify they don't exist, I can't say that because I don't know if they do or if they do not. I would strongly suggest, and I think this is putting the cart before the horse, it was mentioned that there would be some kind of debate and a scaling down, as Councilman Abdallah indicated, at least that's what was said in committee, to bring it, bring these items down to a certain manageable amount. Because otherwise, this is gonna cost the taxpayers at Dearborn Heights a lot of money. And I really don't want to be one of them that's gonna pay for this witch hunt.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We do have a motion on the table. Is there any questions directly related to the motion? And only, a question only, not almost statements, questions? Councilman Wenzel?
Now, in this motion, as Mr. Abdallah said, is there a limit we're putting on it? Or, or is this not part of this motion at all?
What was discussed earlier, that we can put a limit on it, and they're willing to report to us every so many dollars worth.
So even if we put a limit on it, say, say we put, you know, $100,000. And once after that, we, we would have the authority to increase it if we, if we so, so thought fit to do that.
Right.
I'm, I'm in favor of putting a limit on it, but I don't know how we go about doing that. I don't know, I don't know how I'd vote on this, this stuff.
Mr. Clerk, is it appropriate not to put a limit on it? Or do we need to vote and then redo our motion?
This is a resolution. I, I think you need to vote on the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, we'll vote on it. And then, I mean, I'm in favor of putting it here on it too.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, I, my question is this. So we're voting to request the production of the items on Exhibit 1 and 2. So it's not just the letter that we got yesterday from Reiman Group, but it's the items. And again, I suggest that we first have them request the information or the attorney from the administration or whoever, and then get a a or no before we need to subpoena it or demand it.
Okay, Councilman Coniston, we do have a motion on the table. I'm only taking questions directly related to this item. Okay, this time we will take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Coniston, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Muscat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Adella, how do you vote?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wenzel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melonowski Maxwell votes yes, if necessary. Next item on the agenda is Mayor Polietto's resolution to regulate 5G towers.
Council Chair?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council concur with Dan Polietto on this resolution. And since it is he that putting this on, and I, and, and I concur with him 100%. I'd like to turn the floor back over to Mr. Polietto to do his own resolution, if that's okay with the council chair.
Fine with me. Hold on, let me unmute him. Mayor, you're unmuted.
Okay, you want me to read the resolution then?
Yes, please do.
Whereas the buildout of the 5G network is leading to the installation of numerous nodes within the residential areas of Dearborn Heights. And whereas the residents of Dearborn Heights have asked the city of Dearborn Heights' selected officials to restrict the installation of these nodes. And whereas the health concerns connected to 5G have yet to be resolved. And whereas the state of Michigan's legislature has greatly limited local control as it relates to communication regulations and pole placement restrictions. And whereas the ruling of the Federal Communication Commission, known as the FCC, has further restricted local control and the city's ability to regulate the placement of nodes within the residential neighborhoods. And whereas the United States Congress has not made any efforts to overturn the FCC's rulings, therefore be it resolved, the city of Dearborn Heights' mayor and city council request that Congresswoman Debbie Dingle and Rashida Tlaib support and pass legislation to overturn the FCC's rulings. And further be it resolved, the city of Dearborn Heights' mayor and the city council request that State Senator Betty Jean Alexander and State Representatives Jill Jones and Frank Liberati support and pass legislation to return the powers to the local government, permitting them to control and restrict the placement of nodes in their own communities. And further be it resolved that the Dearborn Heights City Clerk send copies of this resolution to Congresswoman Debbie Dingle and Rashida Tlaib, State Senator Betty Jean Alexander, State Representative Jill Jones and Frank Liberati, Wayne County Commissioner David Kinesik, and to the Downriver Community Conference, known as DCC, and the Conference of Western Wayne, known as CWW.
Support.
Support.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Madam Chair? Any questions directly related to this? Councilman Bazey?
Well, I'm glad this finally was released, this resolution. I just got a question. The money that was collected already for the, the bond and also for the permits, is that going to a separate account? What account is that going into?
Mayor?
You'll have to ask the controller. I, I do not know what particular account those dollars are going to. I don't know.
Controller Bazey, can you unmute the name of the bet, please?
I believe we created account number. I don't know it off the top of my head to track them. It's, it's a separate revenue account. I could get you the number and send an email, but I believe we created a separate account so that we keep it. It's an escrow account because, but I, I don't have the exact number.
Madam Chair, I, I, I do appreciate if you can send it to us so we can keep track of it. And just in case there's anything, you know, that we, we have something on the side separated.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Abdallah is next, please.
Madam Chair, just a couple things. I just wanted to clarify for some of the residents. Although me, I'm totally against 5G until we have further information. So I'm totally against 5G and, and I'm in favor of this resolution, although I don't want people to get too excited. Because all a resolution is, is just us saying that we are against this, and we'd like to put a stop to this. But it doesn't necessarily give us the authority or the power to be able to stop it, unfortunately. In addition to that, I'd like to comment on a letter that we received, all of us did, from Verizon representative. And, and I just want to say it publicly, it's all a bunch of blah, 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 blahs of how they will work with the city. But at the end of the day, they're gonna keep going with installing these towers. And I'm really, really saddened that they're installing these early in the mornings, on a Sunday morning, right next to residences, right next to different places where there's kids, there's adults. We don't know how safe it is, but everything I've seen leaves me at least some serious concerns. So I'm really disappointed in Verizon and others. Just like to say this publicly in their letter. So I'm really disappointed in Verizon and I'd just like to say this publicly in their letter, honestly, to be blunt and maybe unprofessional, but it's garbage. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also have gotten complaints from residents who had poles installed and they were in a mess. They didn't even clean up after them. Uh, and this one gentleman, it contacted me. It had been over a month since they, they had put the pole in and that's unacceptable. If it's gonna continue like this, I'm not happy with it at all. Um, is there any other questions directly related to this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. It passes. Next, we have Brownfield Administrator, resolution adopting the proposed redevelopment at six four two five Telegraph.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Tom Roscoe, Administrator for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And he is, he's got an attached copy, the Brownfield Plan Development by Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the proposed redevelopment at six four two five North Telegraph, which is at the corner of Hass. Having held a public hearing on June twenty, June eighth, two thousand twenty, they've recommended that the city council adopt the plan. And they have attached the resolution with appropriate language for this action. And this is outlined in Item eleven C. Uh, Madam Chair, do you want me to read the resolution also?
No.
Or do you want me to just say as attached? I'm sorry?
Say as outlined below.
Okay, uh, and this would include the resolution as outlined below on eleven C. Thank you.
Support.
Support.
Uh, Councilman Bazey, is there any questions directly related to this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All those opposed? I just, okay, it passes. Next item on the agenda, business license renewal for three four two Bar and Grill located at three nine three two Pelham. Applebee's number eight oh eight five located at two six five eight two Ford and Cooper's Garage located at two one two four four Van Born.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that, uh, the city council approve the renewal of the business licenses for three four two Bar and Grill on Pelham, Applebee's on Ford Road and Cooper's Garage at two one two two four Van Born, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Tom has his hand up. Is that on purpose, Tom?
Um, you're muted.
He's muted.
I was putting my hand up for the next, uh, uh, for, uh, the next fourteen.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. Thank you for noticing.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Um, I have a request here, um, from Christie Laslow. If to put the appraisals out for bid again, if not, she will have to wait to the next meeting to get the official approval and then go out for bid. Can we add this to the end of this meeting?
Council Chair.
Can we do this? Mr. Clerk?
He's muted.
Yes.
Can we add it at the end here?
Uh, yeah, you've done it in the past, so.
We'll send this, um, it's okay, um, Chief of Staff Laslow would like permission to go put the appraisals out for bid again.
Council Chair.
Support.
Councilman Muskie.
I move council approve, uh, Chrissy Laslow's request to go out for a bid on, uh, uh, on the items that she needs to do to get the, uh, grant moving again.
Council, well, wait, it's not a bid, it's a request for, I apologize for being out of turn.
Go ahead. No, Chrissy, clarify it, please, so we get it right.
Yeah, authorize me to seek, um, request for proposals for the appraisal services for the grant.
As she said.
Support.
Uh, Councilman Bazey supports that. Is there any questions in regards to this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. It does pass. Next, we'll move on to comments from council members.
Madam Chair. I have three items. The first one, I know we talked about the 5G towers of Verizon. I don't, I think somebody from Verizon's online. I don't know if they're still on. But, uh, I'd like to find out why they're putting them closer to residents. And, you know, that was discussed in the past, that they're, they're not gonna put them that close in proximity. And the other question is, uh, I mean, for the same one for the 5Gs, why can't they, uh, what is the cost if they go a little bit higher and put them away from, from where they're, where they're at right now? So if they can go on main street, like industrial areas, why can't they do that but make them higher? I have seen that in the past and obviously not in the states and other countries, you know, for like my travel. So I've seen it done before, you know, so I've never seen, you know, towers that kind of polluted like in our, polluting our cities with that many poles. You know, why can't we do that? So I think, you know, I don't know who can actually reach out to Verizon and ask them that question. Why can't they do that? I don't know if it's because of the economical, uh, issue that they don't wanna pay the extra money because it's a standard pole versus something that can go a little bit higher, you know, and pay a little extra money. But then it could cause less headaches for the residents and for themselves. So that's my first one. I guess, you know, I mean, this, this can go to the administration if they wanna follow up with Verizon. The second one, uh, second question is, uh, I, we, we haven't talked about that for a while, you know, for the, for the OPEB, you know, for a hundred seventy-seven million that we have unfunded liabilities. Uh, I know we agreed as a council to put money aside, uh, for the next, uh, what, thirty years or so, uh, to pay that off. So, um, I guess this question is for the administration. Are we, uh, is there a commission, uh, like we have commission on everything else? Is there a commission and oversight for, for this, uh, for the OPEB? For the healthcare, for the general, you know, government?
May I like to answer that?
Well.
Have your own muted.
Okay, uh, no, there's no commission. What it is, is we made a pledge and the council concurred in it to the state of Michigan and we came up with. There's so much background, I can't believe.
Everybody keeps on muting themselves. Please leave yourself muted unless you're city council or the mayor.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, this is about the worst that we've had. I, I will tell you that a particular person keeps showing up when this happens, so it's becoming very evident. It's one council member, but anyway, uh, so we reported to the state a plan. We are following that plan and, um, that's, we'll, we'll get there. It'll, it's gonna take a few years, but we're right on schedule.
Thank you.
Okay, last, last question, Madam Chair, uh, is that I know I've had that concern, uh, in the past regarding that, uh, that vehicle that we purchased, but that red Cherokee. I'd like to find out where's that vehicle at? Since it was purchased, you know, I mean, it, I'm not comfortable voting on anymore on vehicles purchased if we don't have accountability where that red Cherokee is. I don't know who can answer that question. Where's that vehicle at? I know it's not where it's supposed to be.
Does anybody wanna answer that?
Uh.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I, where do you believe the red Cherokee is? Uh, I don't.
Well, I'm asking you, Mayor, where is it? I mean, you're the mayor.
I may be the mayor, but, uh, what red Cherokee are you talking about?
The one that we purchased for thirty, about thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, a couple of years back.
For which department? Police?
Yes.
Then why don't we ask, uh, Chief Myers where the red Cherokee is? But I have no knowledge of where that vehicle is.
Okay, Chief Myers is ready. Go ahead, please.
Sure, the police department has no red Jeep Cherokee anywhere in our fleet. Um, I have no idea what they're talking about. We have never purchased a red Jeep Cherokee for any police officer, any division, or anyone else. So I have no idea what's being talked about.
That was future, but two chiefs be, uh, behind you, uh, chief, so that wasn't done under your watch, so obviously.
I, it's, I can, yeah, I, I understand that you believe, I, I know of only one Jeep branded vehicle that's owned by the police department and I know exactly where it's at. And I know that it's being used by the person for their safety concerns. I won't tell you a color, style, make, model, or year. But I can tell you, we only have one Jeep branded vehicle in our entire police fleet. And it is being used as, in a law enforcement capacity.
Thank you. All right, any other, um, Councilman Wenzel, you're next. Unmute yourself.
Okay, okay, I was wondering if we had an update on the, uh, the question I had about the, uh, clerk's office printing up and the police delivering our, our packets, our agenda packets. Um, uh, I know some, some chiefs that were in the past, a few back, decided it was not, not, uh, a good thing to, for the police to deliver our packets to us. And we print them up ourselves now and we look on their computers and watch and it's better to have a printed up packet. I don't know what the reason was for that. Um, I, I'd like to find out if we can get something done on that, uh, Chief Myers. If we can have that started up again, it'd be really helpful. I had a young officer come by my house the other day who was down the block on a medical emergency. And he stopped and, uh, talked to all the kids keeping the social distancing. But the kids just loved seeing a police officer in the neighborhood and it was great, great PR. And also, um, my la, last meeting, I made a comment about city opening five days a week and I received over forty communications and, uh, approval of that. And I am pushing forward with this on my own right now. And we'll be asking for a study session coming up soon, I get some more information. And also the, um, subcontracting our dispatch, which I am against. Um, I am looking into that. I want the residents to know that I am against that. And, uh, I think we should look into having our own dispatch, keeping our own dispatch and improving it. And as far as 5G goes, I've been against 5G since it was first brought to our city council. Um, I've talked to several people on the inside from, from Comcast who are themselves against it. And from what I understand, it's mostly for atomic, uh, for self-driving vehicles. Is that's why they wanna have this? It's not to do anything with your cell phone speed or your internet. It's all for the autonomous vehicles and, uh, thank you. That's all I have to say today.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muskie.
Uh, I guess this is a question for Chief Brogan if he's on. Um, vehicles in the, the fire department as far as being leased. Does he know, uh, what these leases, how many vehicles are leased and what the leases cost?
Yeah, we, we have, let's see, I give you a complete list. We have Wolf Bar Utility, pickup trucks at both stations. See, and then to the fire marshal's vehicle and boat and the fire inspector's vehicle and, uh, uh, EMS coordinator vehicle. Those are all lease vehicles. And it's through the enterprise lease program, like that's where we got all the ordinance vehicles as well, if you remember.
Yes.
And, and, uh, the prices range there roughly four, five hundred dollars a month. Um, but that's, it, it's been, it was, it was submitted with, um.
We, we don't have anything that's like eight, nine hundred dollars, do we?
I'd have to, oh, you know what? The newest, you know, the new, the battalion two vehicle, I'm not sure, because that one's a larger vehicle. I don't think it's that much, though. I, you know, it might be around eight hundred. I'd have to, I'll have to look.
Why would you pay eight hundred dollars a month on a, uh, uh, on a vehicle? That's a lot of money.
It, it's, when, when you look at the, the, the cost to purchase it versus the, the lease, it really wasn't that, that outrageous compared, because, because it's a larger vehicle with four-wheel drive. So, um, I, I have to go back to look for sure. I, I can't tell off the top of my head what it is.
Is that, is, is that a necessary thing to have a big truck like that that's four-wheel drive and all decked out?
Yeah, absolutely. For, for, for the, because it carries a lot of fire equipment on it as well. I mean, it now, now it's all, uh, now that it's completely set up, I invite you to come by the station and look at it. But yeah, it's got, um, that's all the, uh, there's a lot of necessary equipment that comes along with that vehicle to, to fires.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
We have Councilman Coniston next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the 5G, um, you know, I think we're all disturbed. Just, uh, last week, they installed new, uh, phone lines and some 5G equipment in the, uh, right behind my building here on Ford Road and it blew out my phones and, um, blew out the phone service, which is with, uh, an internet provider. Um, way back when Andy Dillon was in the legislature, before he was the speaker, he helped push through what everyone called the AT&amp;T bill, limiting, uh, what cities could do, what franchise fees they could charge. Uh, Mayor Jack O'Reilly and, uh, Dearborn City Attorney Bill Irvine and a group called Protech were very active in trying to restore some local control. Uh, our powers are really limited by, uh, federal law and also state law. But I encourage everyone to continue to speak out. Uh, this is new technology. And, um, again, they, they just installed something right behind my building and it wreak havoc on our building and its older wiring system. And then also, Madam Chair, regarding the, uh, the audit, I think we need to define the, the scope of the audit as a group to keep our costs under control and, um, uh, have the auditors or the attorney request the information directly from, uh, the administration first and then get a written response before we, uh, embark on any subpoenas. Because, uh, I talked to a CPA who said the cost of this, uh, just preliminarily would be no less than sixty or seventy thousand per year for each year that's audited. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I have just an announcement for our residents. Uh, we're gonna have a food distribution this Saturday coming up August first at nine AM. The address is at nine six zero zero Laverne and Redford. It was very close to West Chicago and Inksley Road. Again, there's no residency requirements, no income verification. If you need something, just come on out. You're picking something up for a neighbor friend, come on out. Again, it's nine AM this Saturday, August first, Hosanna Table Lutheran Church. That's a shared food pantry and we'll have, uh, produce boxes, dairy boxes, um, protein boxes. So that's the first thing. The second thing, I'd like to, um, make a statement, if I may, and I did ask, uh, ahead of time for this. Um, since our last city council meeting on Tuesday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, I've received a lot of, um, correspondences, emails and phone calls from our residents regarding an incident that happened during that meeting. Um, I introduced a resolution, as you know, that was removed tonight because the, the quest of the resolution was to get financial information that's provided by the charter. And we did receive that and thank you for giving that to us. However, during the meeting, the mayor responded to the resolution I introduced by reading a prepared, very negative, very false, politically charged statement that personally attacked me. This type of political statement attempts to discredit, attempts to slander and harm another person's reputation. This is an uncritical violation of our council policies and procedures and the law. As an elected official of over forty years, Mr. Mayor, you know that that's a policy and that's concerning. Your disregard of this policy is harmful and unacceptable. Furthermore, efforts to intimidate, slander, or stifle the voices of select council members who are elected by the people to do this job, who have a track record of introducing resolutions and voting in the interest of transparency for our residents, is not only a violation of policy and law, but it also defeats the purpose of which we are elected.
Okay.
And I just, yeah, I wanna say, I and other council members have been targeted and this should never happen. We should not be intimidated. We should not be silenced or attacked. We should not be intimidated from doing what is in the best interest of our residents that we are elected to do by anyone. This is, I've advocated over the last eight and a half years on this council. I will continue to do what's best for our residents, including advocating for financial transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council, oh, we have, um, Mr. Clerk, would you like to speak next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, briefly, next Tuesday is the election, one week from today. Um, we will be open on Friday from nine to twelve, uh, one, two, four, for your voting needs and, and voting, uh, um, whatever you may have to do. Also on.
and, and voting, uh, um, whatever you may have to do. Also, on Saturday, from eight to four. I urge everybody, um, if you're not registered to vote, please register before Election Day. Um, it becomes, um, quite a cumbersome task on Election Day and, and takes a much longer time for, so for your convenience, please register to vote early if you're still or planning to vote and haven't registered. Also, um, please consider, if you can, and you have made your decisions, turning in your absentee ballot before Election Day. Um, it makes, um, the staff's job much easier, um, if we don't get hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of ballots on Election Day. Madam Chair, I hope, um, you will, uh, give me one moment. I was supposed to do this right after the pandemic. Things happened, and we didn't, but I have a, uh, resolution, and I will show it. And this resolution is for the three ladies that work in the clerk's office. They did an absolutely amazing job on Election Day. I, I can't explain to people, they didn't take a lunch, they didn't take a dinner, they barely took a, a restroom break, um, we were inundated with nearly two hundred people registering to vote, and it was the first time that happened. And to this day, it's amazing how, how well they handled it, how professionally they handled it, how calmly they handled it, a- and how everything went well at the end. So, um, thanks to Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office and Councilwoman Lisa Hicks-Platon, I have a resolution for each of our three ladies, um, Deputy Clerk Kathy Birchfield, City Council Secretary Lynn Senia, and, uh, Secretary George Ann Semenyak. And I'd just like to read, they're all the same, if I could read it, Madam Chair. It says, "Let it be known that this is a personal privilege to honor and congratulate Deputy Clerk Kathleen Birchfield for her hard work, dedication to Election Day duties and voting registration processes. As a full-time employee, Birchfield is determined to go above and beyond to assure an efficient and effective Election Day. Birchfield has spent tireless hours working in the clerk's office. These duties include processing over nearly two hundred people who registered to vote and voted for the first time on Tuesday, March tenth, two thousand twenty. Birchfield confirmed registrations and residency as required by the State Secretary of State for over one hundred additional citizens. Birchfield maintained professionalism with dealing with complex situations and was welcoming to all voters. Birchfield's duties as Deputy City Clerk grants her the opportunity to provide voting access to all voters. A special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to thanking Deputy City Clerk Kathleen Birchfield for her commitment to Election Day duties. Senator Betty Jean Alexander, Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist II, and Governor Grant in Wichita. Ms. Senia and Ms. Semenyak have the same resolutions. Once again, these ladies have, did an outstanding job on that day, they have been doing an outstanding job since this pandemic. Please thank them, please just say, uh, thank you goes a long way, folks, we're all human and, and, um, just say thank you to them when you see them, because they're, they're an amazing bunch, they kept that office, um, efficient and moving, and, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart, ladies. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk.
They do a great job, they do, they've always been very helpful in everything they've done. Oh, hold on, I'm mute, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, just want to touch four points real quickly. Thank you for passing the 5G resolution. I got a rather nasty, uh, email from, uh, Verizon, but we're gonna start putting the political pressure on them to start respecting, uh, communities and their right to regulate, uh, these polls. Secondly, um, I, I hate to bring this up, but I, I think that, uh, Councilman Wenzel, you have to do something about the background noise, because when it flared up, your picture appears. So I think that that's where that background noise is coming from. I hate to signal you out, but it is very distracting. Thirdly, I hope nobody accuses me, because, uh, I have had eager beaver for providing lawn service for my house for about five years, and Mr. Nizio and his father and I were very close friends. So I want to publicly say that I have already contracted for them to do landscaping around my house, so, uh, that is, uh, public, um, providing that public disclosure, and I did not get involved in any way, shape, or fashion as related to the bids, as it was through grass cutting. Lastly, uh, all of us need to watch very carefully the federal legislation that's going on under this CARE two package, or what, it's got another name, I think HELP or something, because the Democrats have put on that there would be direct aid to cities, counties, and state government. Uh, the Republicans don't have that in their proposal. That will be very significant, because of the state of Michigan, that, when I heard the governor speak at two today, she said if she didn't get more aid, she was gonna cut, and it's so easy to cut state, local government, uh, or, uh, the local government. So, we need to watch very carefully how that legislation takes place, what is in it, and we may have to respond, I, well, we will have to respond to it. So I'm just putting a, a note out there for all of you to be, uh, rather careful. I know that both of our Congresswomen, because I've discussed it with them, are very much in favor of, uh, aid being given to the states and the local communities. So, our congresspeople are going, are supporting us, but whatever passes is gonna have a big effect on Dearborn Heights and the state of Michigan.
Thank you, okay. Any other council members? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to announcements from the community. Which I don't think we have any now, because most, okay, at this time...
Council Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Council, go ahead.
I, um, I just wanted to say something really quick, um, I, I know it's probably with council and the mayor and everybody else. Um, I'd like to thank Walt for working with them throughout the years. Um, we've had some of our differences and some epic battles, but I think when it comes down to it, both Walt and I have always done what we felt was in best for the city. Walter has put in a lot of hours and has done an amazing job updating the clerk's office, saying nothing about the previous clerk, but just with the election changes and everything else going on and him responding to it, he's done a great job. I, um, decided to do my civic duty, which my grandmother told me to do, and my mother now does with voting, one, during an election, during the presidential election, and I will say, i- it's eye-opening. They're across the hall, I've been working in the mayor's office in my position for seventeen years, but I can honestly say I know maybe two percent of everything he does, and I want to thank him for all that, and I wish him well, and I wish Lynn good luck as a new clerk.
Good old...
Yeah, I also would like to say, it's been a pleasure working with, um, the clerk, he's always been helpful, anytime I've had a question, he's been there to answer it for me, and it's kind of sad, I just realized, this is his last official meeting as clerk. You know, I wish him luck in the future, and at this time, I will open up to, uh, announcements...
Madam Chair.
...from the community, which I don't think there is any, is, okay, Rector Hassen, go ahead, please.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, council members, and good evening, Mayor. Hope everybody's safe and healthy. I have a couple of announcements, a couple of announcements to make tonight regarding my department. First of all, I want to wish Walt, um, a nice retirement, thank you all for all your work and your dedication to the city, and I'd like to congratulate Lynn again for being sworn in. The community and economic development is launching a program as of next week, and thanks to the mayor who insisted on helping the residents as well as the departments, this program will allow us to help residents, based on their income, to pay their rent or mortgage for three months, and their utilities for three months. Uh, I will leave the phone number, which is three one three seven nine one three five zero zero. Please, anybody in the city, just call this number, we do have staff on call, they will take your number. The application will be on our website as of late next week, because we're putting, uh, the final touches on it. Uh, this is a great service to the city, please use it, it's available, it's from the CARES Act, uh, just call our phone number and we will respond to you as quickly as possible. Thank you very much, and you all have, be safe and have a nice, uh, nice night. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, next we will open it up, is that all the, um, community announcements? At this time, we will open it up to public announcements, I do have quite a list of people that want to speak. First one I have is Dana Parrish. Is Dana Parrish still here?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Councilor Chair?
Yes, I don't know why the, um, I have to mute you, ma'am, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Good evening, good evening, uh, council, Councilwoman, Councilman. Through the chair, um, I, I requested some extra time this evening, and it was approved in writing. Through the chair, uh, Mayor, when you appoint a director to a position within the city, are they subject to the same background check as other employees are?
Hold on, I have to unmute the mayor. He's not unmuting. There you go, okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Some of the department heads, uh, I have direct, uh, control over their appointment, some of them I do not.
The directors that you have, uh, that you have appointed, are they subject to the same background checks that other city employees are subject to?
Um, I would say yes.
Do any of the current directors that you have control over, that you appoint, have a criminal record?
Not that I'm aware of.
I've become aware of at least one person who may have a criminal record. You're not aware of that?
No.
Okay, the Third Circuit case number is nine three dash zero zero nine one one nine dash zero one dash F as in Frank, H as in Henry. This case is a criminal sexual conduct case, rape case, which was originally charged as a felony and pled to a misdemeanor in a circuit court in Detroit. Cases in a circuit court need to be at least a felony to be held in Detroit, which meant it was a second degree and was pled to a fourth degree. Since you're not aware of this, are you going to check, check in, verify, and get back to the council immediately? I'll give you the case number again, sir. It's Third Circuit, and this is available to the public. It's nine three dash zero zero nine one one nine dash zero one dash Frank Henry. And there's no one else that you're aware of that you appointed that has a criminal record, is that correct?
I already told you that, no.
Okay.
I don't know that anybody has. I am not aware of this.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. Uh, congratulations to the new, uh, clerk, and, uh, Mr. Prochevitz, uh, thank you for your service, sir. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next we have Mahad Abraham, um, please state your name and limit it to three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, council members. This is Mahad Abraham, and I'm reaching out to you to ask you for help, resolve an issue I have to get in my business license, one property that I purchased back in two thousand nineteen. Now, I have presented my case in front of the council, and through a letter, and by speaking in the last meeting, and I'm appealing again to ask for guidance through a resolution. I'd like to outline first that the property that I purchased was an existing used car dealership, and during the transition ownership renovation and getting my business ready, was not until March that I applied for the city license. However, the city was shut down due to COVID nineteen, and I have waited till June to restart the process. But after I restarted the process in June, I was surprised to find out that because the old license had expired, the application was treated as a new car dealership, uh, new license, and it was not processed because there was a moratorium on new year, used car dealership. And since that license was renewed, it wasn't renewed last year, my business is considered a new business. But, uh, during the purchase process, and when I did my due diligence and getting approved from the city department, from, from the building department, first, nobody mentioned that previous license needed to be renewed or it was an issue. Even now, when I talk to the building department, they don't understand why getting a license is an issue in the first place, because even if the law do, even though the license was expired, the previous license, that doesn't mean that this is considered a new used car dealership, and the moratorium should apply only on a new, new used car dealership on a new location, and my location is an existing used car dealership. Uh, I purchased that property using my life saving, my family saving, and loan, and to provide better life for me and my family, and in, instead, I've been caught in the middle of very difficult situation. It's extremely difficult for me, and I hope that the city council member can help me to resolve this issue. Thank you for your time and give me this opportunity again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, uh...
Councilor Chair?
Um, Mr. Miyaki?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to address that issue with the, uh, business license. Briefly, uh, the license was held by a different entity, not by the gentleman who has spoken. That license had expired, so the question was, did your moratorium basically prevent him from getting a new license? And I think it's clear that it did. I had consultations with the clerk's office on this, they wanted confirmation. I said, indeed, that was correct. This body could, if it wanted to, uh, come up with some way to basically allow him to, uh, be an exception to the moratorium, provided there was clear language in terms of the standard, otherwise you might open the gates. So, if anyone wants, uh, Mr. Roberts or I to end up, uh, looking into a way to allow him to end up, uh, having a way to get around the moratorium, please let us know. Thank you.
I'm Chair.
Okay, um...
Dave? I, I'd like to propose through the council chair that we have, uh, our counselor, Mark Roberts and Gary Miyaki, uh, do make an amendment in this particular case. Uh, based on everything I've heard in this particular case, uh, I, I really personally believe that we should allow this particular resident to, well, I'm not sure if he's a resident or not, but this particular person, uh, to allow him to open up in this particular spot. This is on Beach Daily, uh, this was previously used car lot, and even previous to that, it used to be a place where they fixed, uh, lawnmowers and, and mopeds. So this is not exactly, uh, a, a spot that's had super high desire for, uh, a major hotel or a major mall to open up, and I think it's much better to have something like this opened up there now than to have it completely closed down, and based on the circumstances, the fact that the other, uh, previous owner had their license expire, I really believe that in this particular case, the fair and right thing to do would be to allow this particular person to open up, uh, this, because we're not allowing additional new ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah, the only problem is our appointment for our corporate council has expired, and the charter does not have any provisions for us to extend the contract. So at this point, we are basically without corporate council until when we're, bring somebody forward to us to be appointed to that position. So, our hands are tied at this point.
Not necessarily, because we could always use, uh, the firm of Shank, uh, Matt Shank's firm, which is a, uh, an attorney for our, us as, as city council, to, to make a change in, uh, moratorium, because the moratorium was just not clear, just has no new ones, and this is not a new one, it was already an existing used car lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, go ahead please.
I, I also concur. I've, I've spoken to the gentleman. He is a resident of Dearborn Heights as well. And it, it, again, you know, there was a pandemic and there was an issue with the license. So with the pandemic, it caused them not to get a license. And I think the moratorium should be done in the next, like what, two weeks or so? I mean, I don't know who, I, I don't have it in front of me.
It's about forty days left.
Is it forty days left?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, next we have Leslie Windless. Can you unmute Leslie? State your name and you have three minutes. Then I have you, Mr. Riley and Mr. Hadad too. You're also on the work.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead please.
Okay, my name is Leslie Windless and I'm speaking as a concerned parent and taxpayer in Dearborn Heights. For those of you who do not know me, I am the lead organizer for the peaceful protests that occurred last Friday, which gave the youth in Dearborn Heights an opportunity to address the racism they experienced in this city. Additionally, we address the trauma that is caused when we see countless people of color slaughtered on video in this country by people that have sworn to protect and serve them. Thank you to Mayor Palesko for taking time to come out and hear from us. I look forward to working with you on policies that match your amazing words of support. Also, thank you to the Dearborn Heights Police Department, specifically Captain Erickson and Smith for working with me to set this event up and for keeping us safe during the event. Last week, I spoke at the local school board meeting about racism and I gave them many examples, but the most imperative one is that a teacher who told a student to go back to Africa still works for the D seven school district. After the meeting, I was approached by the president of the school board to assure me that they heard what I said, but getting kids back in school was the top priority. If, if this was true, there would not have been a but. I said racism has been the longest pandemic in the history of America and the time to address it is now, not later. I said that our children are tired of being fed subpar black history lessons that start and end with slavery. I said that black mothers are tired of being painted out to be the angry black woman for standing up for their children who have been looked at as less than for four hundred plus years. Little brown girls and boys in Dearborn Heights, if your teachers, superintendent, city council members, school board, or any other quote unquote leaders won't say it, then I will. Black lives matter, you matter. Your ancestors contributed to limitless innovations, science, literature, art and customs that have shaped this world despite slavery. Now, to address you all directly, I charge you with following up with the school board, the police station and any other city officials to ensure that this issue was taken seriously and considered urgent. I also charge you to educate yourselves. There are free resources like embracerace.org and to work with the community leaders and activists to create and implement real policies and procedures that address this topic in its entirety. It is time to end the systematic oppression of people of color on every level and I want to hear this body speaking transparently about it with the community. Thank you for improving implicit bias training for the police, but I agree that everyone could benefit.
We're sorry, but there is a three minute limit and I need.
Yeah, I'm finding myself.
Okay, next, I, next person is we have Elizabeth, the HR Director. Did you still need to speak, Elizabeth?
I was just gonna simply wish Walter well, um, thank him for all the swearing in services that he did throughout and as a resident, he always handled, um, the elections seamlessly and a congratulations to Lynn, who is one of our own inside City Hall and we're so proud of her and we're so happy to have her be our city clerk. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lynn and again, we have a three minute limit. Go ahead Lynn. You're, you're muted. Lynn, you're muted. Okay, you're on.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I would like to thank Walter for, um, his guidance, his mentorship, his, um, you know, coming to the meetings with him, sometimes the notes that he, he sent me. He has, this office is run, you know, like Chrissy said, it's difficult. You have been in here, uh, council chair on election night. Um, Councilman Muscat has, he, he works the election for us. It's a complicated process, but we have a staff, Deputy Clerk Birchfield, George Anne, our, um, AV Board. They're real dedicated people and anytime anybody wants to come in and see the process and, and our staff here too, Elizabeth, Chrissy, Jack, everybody that I, anybody that I have not mentioned, have pitched in and I want to thank him for building that team. And thank you for the confidence that you have in me too as well.
Thank you.
You'll be missed, Walt.
Okay, next we have Brian Hadad. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everybody. Um, also I want to send out my, uh, thank you and congratulations to Walt for retirement. Hopefully you have a great time retired and congratulations to Lynn. Uh, you're gonna do great. Wanted to, uh, give a special thank you to St. John, the Baptist Church over on McDonald Street in the south end of Dearborn Heights. Um, they graciously donated a bingo board to the Eaton Senior Center. They have not used it in fifteen years, but us fixing that, uh, to try to get that working is gonna be a lot cheaper than buying a brand new one and, cause these new ones are all digital and that, that's gonna be just preliminary thought. It's gonna be four to five thousand dollars just to buy a new one. So we, uh, reached out, or they reached out to us and said they had one they wanted to donate to, to us. So I want to say thank you to them and also thank you to John Sellme, Mike Blackburn, uh, in the Building Maintenance Department because they helped us move that over to the Eaton Center today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have John Riley. Um, again, you have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Hello, I would just like to congratulate Walt and it was a pleasure working with him when I was in the treasurer's office. The integrity he put in, uh, in conducting elections for the city and as related to the treasurer's office was, uh, the, the assistance in the collection of personal property taxes during the business license renewal process. That was a very successful program that, uh, they took a lot of initiative in and, uh, it was a very successful. I wish Walt well and I wish Lynn Sinia, the newly appointed treasurer, I mean, uh, clerk, uh, a success. I think she'll do a great job. I've worked with her for many years and she's a very detail oriented. So best of luck to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have David Nizel. Would you like to? David Nizel? Did he leave us? With eager beaver?
Yep, can you hear me?
There you are, go ahead.
All right, I just wanted to thank council for making the right decision by the residents of the Dearborn Heights. Secondly, I look forward to meeting and exceeding expectations with the, um, weed enforcement and tall grass. Some things I wanted to make clear, um, about my proximity to Dearborn Heights. I'm a lifelong Dearborn Heights, um, well, I was a lifelong Dearborn Heights resident. I was born and raised in the city, resided there for forty years. I'm no longer resident. Um, my shop is at Inkster and ninety six and Redford, so I'm a stone's throw away from Dearborn Heights. Um, we can mobilize and instant and service Dearborn Heights with no problems. And I just wanted to thank you guys and let you know that I got the city's back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Christina Lazlo. Or did you already speak? Go ahead, um.
I'm not gonna speak at this time. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Next I have Gator. You have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Hi, everybody. Um, I have one announcement and also, um, a question for Mayor Puleco. Hi, Mayor Puleco. I, I sent an email asking can we meet this Thursday? I'm sorry, should I directed that to Madam Chair so you can direct it to the mayor?
We, and then it goes to him.
I apologize for that. Madam Chair, could you please ask Mayor Puleco, can we please meet Thursday at noon to continue our works for the DCC Commission?
Answer is absolutely yes. Although, we'll, we'll meet by telephone. I'm not doing personal meetings, but I'll be more than happy to meet with you Thursday at noon.
Okay, thank you. My other announcement is that, um, for the, for the past three city council meetings, I have been very vocal about the need for more diversity, equity and inclusion for the city of Dearborn Heights. And, uh, my announcement is that I believe in the value of that so much that I am running to be on the D seven school board to be able to add that value to the, to the D seven school board as a woman of color, as an educator, as a mental health professional and as a D seven resident. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I'll be hosting a meet and greet via Zoom as we get closer to voting date to be able to let everybody in the community who wants to meet me and know my vision and opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have.
Council Chair.
Uh, you're not on the list yet.
Oh, I was just going to comment that we really should not have any discussions of electoral politics and I, I, so, uh, considered inappropriate under the council rules. Thank you.
All right, next we have Gator. I'm sorry, not Gator. We have Galaxy nine note. It's a thirty two year. Flotton? State your name. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Tina Brown. I've been at the last two council meetings in regards to hoarding situation next door. Um, I just wanted to let, give you guys an update that, um, not this last Monday, but the Monday before, they did go ahead and clean up the property. I'm very happy that I'm finally able to open up my house and air it out and be able to sit on the porch without smelling all kinds of garbage. But, um, I want to thank, um, Jack McIntyre for bringing the people out here. He did tell me that the first company that was supposed to come out here and clean up the property refused to do it and we ended up having Artistic come out and they did really do an awesome job in cleaning up the property next door. They completely filled the dumpster. I also wanted to let you know that they actually did go inside the house earlier, um, this week, this, this last week, um, and Larry Dombrowski, which is in building and engineering department, they went into the home. They deemed the home uninhabitable. Um, they did find temporary housing. There's a, a neighbor down the street. They have rental property, so they're staying in Garden City actually and they are supposed to be having a church coming out to clean out the inside of the house. I want to thank everybody that was involved in coming over here and, and helping with the hoarding situation. But my, my concerns still are how it got to this point and I found out that these people have not had water in their home in two years. How it is that the water department does not have a process for, um, notifying the city that there may possibly be people living in a location without water since it is a state statute that you cannot live in a home without water. Otherwise, we end up with situations like this where people are hoarding and aren't maintaining a clean home environment. But I do want to thank everybody that came out here. Um, they are still working on the property and, um, I'm gonna, you know, continue to make sure that I contact people if I see it starting to get anywhere close to where it was. They said it was one of the worst hoarding situations they've had in the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Next we have Office's Senator. Is the Office's Senator here? You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, that, that's me, I'm sorry. Um, this is Legina Washington. Um, good afternoon to everyone. Senator Betty Jean Alexander wishes to extend well wishes and personal greetings to the residents of, um, Dearborn Heights. During this ever fluid and changing time, we hope everyone is staying well. We wish to extend constituent services to the Senate District. Our office has assisted over six hundred constituents with their unemployment applications. Lisa His Clayton and myself are calling each and every, of each and every constituent to follow up on their UIA cases. If you know of anyone who has questions or may need someone, need some help from unemployment insurance agency, please contact us, our office to help, uh, with their request. The E, I'm sorry, the website is www.senatoralexander.com. To complete the contact form, include your UIA claim number, most recent UIA letter number and state the issue of, the statutory issue as well. You can also contact us at five one seven three seven three zero nine nine four for anyone who needs food assistance, rent or utilities assistance. Please contact our office for scheduling requests, updates, community meetings and events. Questions or concerns about state legisla, legislation and any issues relating to the Michigan State Departments by calling our office. Our staff is eager to hear from you and assist. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Ben Strupkowski. Won't say your name and you have three minutes.
Hi, it's Ben Strupkowski. Um, my question is regarding the water department, um, the Caterpillar nine twenty six. Is that a possibility that could be leased?
Where's Director Sellme? Is he still here? Yeah, I guess he's left us. I'm really sorry.
Yeah, I, I just tried to unmute him. Are you there, John Sellme?
Oh, he's still here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense for the city to lease a piece of its instruction equipment. This is where it's there on the equipment and it doesn't make no financial sense. It doesn't make business sense. This is a ten to fifteen year purchase. You break that down over fifteen years. You know, you talk for ten years, you're talking fifteen thousand dollars a year. You're looking at a lease payment of anywhere from fifteen hundred to three thousand. Okay, cause I know a lot of construction companies lease their equipment. And also the other question is, is, um, the fireman or fire lady that works at the fire station has been writing all these great grants. Is it possible she could do that as a full-time position? Cause this city could really use a grant writer.
Your chief Dave?
Um, I could tell you that, that she does, she helps out. Uh, she kind of advises other departments as they're working on grants, but she also is our EMS coordinator and that saves the city a lot of money, train, keeping up, uh, our paramedics need so many continuing education credits and that's a, a full-time job in a lot of cities. So between that and the grants, she's really, um, she's really booked solid. So, um, she, she works in advisory role. Like I said, I think Chief Myers has mentioned she's gotten a few grants. I know she met with Director Hashem today on, uh, some of the grants that he's working on as well. So, um, yeah, she definitely is, uh, does a good job.
Okay, great. I think, uh, but in the future of, if, uh, if she could either take on that position or if America could, uh, put the word out, he's looking for a grant writer, that would be a good idea. And also, um, have we been advertising for dispatchers? I know you're in a situation where you're thinking about getting rid of them and that, but, um, the only place I see the advertisement is on the city's website.
Okay, we've got Director, um, Elizabeth Sabine Perry. Go ahead, please.
Hi, so we're no longer advertising because we completed the process where we did the written test, the interviews. This wrapped up right before COVID hit us all and so the backgrounds were not returned to us yet in the HR department. They're still at the police department. So that's where we are. So we have a current list with, um, with all new people.
Okay, so the list goes to Chief Meyer. What's the holdup I get now, list to the, uh, HR people?
I believe I made myself pretty clear at the open session. It's my intention that the combined dispatch is the best move for our agency of citizens of Dearborn Heights and I stick by that decision. To bring, to even consider bringing new people on until the council makes a decision would be not a good idea for those employees, even if we were, but I believe this is where we need to go, um, with our agency and that's why I'll be bringing that contract to council every soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have Zuhair. Are you still, Zuhair, are you still here? Zuhair Abdo Haq?
Yeah, he's here. We're.
Yeah, he's here. We're trying to unmute him.
Okay, then you have three minutes.
Yeah, good evening first. And congratulations to Lynn and congratulations to Walter. And thank you for your services, you and your staff. Today, I received the first check from AT&T for the PEG, you know, the PEG program. The company divide the five percent, which is a franchise, and the one percent, which is for PEG. Unfortunately, we enter it in the system as general fund revenue. It's not separated. And last meeting, I have asked Mr. Miyaki to, if we can be kind, to give an opinion, legal opinion, if we can pay some, some things from the PEG. And the mayor directed him to do so and I haven't received anything. So I'm asking, which is my duty, the city council, to allow me to, to start putting all the funds in separate funds. Each one, if it is restricted, will be by itself. This way, I believe it will be so easy for us on the thirtieth of June to push a button to know how much money we have in every account, how much we collected, how much we spent, and we don't have to wait for reconciliation or anything else. So I am going to start from tomorrow the process of trying to separate those funds and put them, each one in separate place so we know where they are and what they are. And I just like the city council to know that because the mayor and the controller have to sign on any creation of a new account. So if it comes to it, I'll be asking you to pass a resolution to help me to do so.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, please.
I was just going to comment that, yes, the mayor and I had discussed, and I have done a bunch of preliminary research. I'm going to need to see the franchise agreements consistent with Mr. Lato's opinion to check into that. And hopefully, after I receive those from the city clerk's office and also have an opportunity to review them, I will have a more definitive opinion with respect to this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Kathy Birchfield.
Okay, hi, this is Kathy Birchfield and I just wanted to thank Walter Pershovitz for his service as the clerk for Dearborn Heights and just tell him what an honor it's been to work with him and to thank him for everything that he's done for me and all of our office. He's done, been nothing but supportive. He's taught me so much and he's really going to be missed. And I also want to thank and congratulate Lynn Sinia for taking on this responsibility. It's been really good working with her in this capacity and I think we're gonna continue to do a good job in the clerk's office. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other people for public comment?
Comptroller Vance has her hand up.
Go ahead, please. Comptroller? Is she unmuted?
Yes, hi, I'm, I'm Linda Vance, the comptroller. I just want some clear, I want to clarify something. The PEG funds are separated in the general fund. I created a new count as of last year. I don't think the treasurer's cash receiving allocates it. So in my department, we allocate every time we get a copy of that check that comes through. We allocate the PEG funds. So there is a separate accounting of the PEG amount within the general fund. So that's all I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we move to adjourn? Hey, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Support.
For my, and Hisclayton, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Needing us to adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night. Council Chair, do you have to stop recording? Or not yet?